The kids have their.
It's muted in the room and we're not able to hear anything.
Can you hear us, Bill?
Can you hear us now?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you for letting us know.
Sorry about that. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right. I'll take a motion to approve the agenda coming up. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion a second to approve the agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none? All of them favor?
Aye.
Aye? Motion passes. Next will be the school board land acknowledgement.
The land we gather on today is the homeland of the Squawks and Island people. The people have existed here since time immemorial, populating the bays and inlets in massive longhouses and seasonal villages in countless numbers. They appropriately call themselves the people of the water because of the bounty of the region's waterways, which carried and sustained their people for millennia. As a tribe, the people continue to work and thrive on these lands, contributing immensely to the cultural and economic wealth of the region. Through the signing of the Medicine Creek Treaty in 1854, the tribe lost a great deal of its usual and accustomed areas for practicing their culture. They were further more restricted from practicing their ancient traditions as missionaries and settlers encroached in the area and brought with them Western philosophies that forbade the religious and cultural practices that they considered offensive. Even their language to Shulpid was nearly extinguished as the government and like-minded entities sought to assimilate the people into submissive citizenry. The tribe survived this encroachment brought on by the largely one-sided treaty negotiations just as they survived the subsequent breaking of most of the treaty agreements made with the United States. Agreements that were written to ensure the people could continue to live in their ancestral lands and practice their traditions without prejudice. The Squawks and people are still here today thriving. The resiliency of these people, past and present, is acknowledged as we gather here today. And in this recognition of the lands we stand on, let us commit to honoring them as they continue to uphold their traditions and culture, a culture that enriches our community like nothing else.
Thank you, Julie. On to tab one, communications, 1.1, school board planning calendar. Any discussions or changes on that, Kelly? Any discussion from the board?
No.
I want to take a moment during board communications to acknowledge two things. One is, this is a record attendance to a school board meeting and there's a whole lot of people in a small space. Recognize that there's not enough chairs and that the community has a strong interest in tonight's meeting. We want everybody to have the opportunity to be here and if take part. If it's, if you choose to take part in public comment in the near future, just bear with us, be patient, and I really do appreciate everybody coming and respecting each other. Next, I want to make a brief comment on the GEA collective bargaining agreement. It's not on the agenda this evening. The board is not prepared to make a vote on that. I know that there's a lot of interest in the room on the, on the CBA. And it's obviously all parties' intentions that this would have been handled sooner. This, we recognize that this may result in our teachers going back to day one without a new contract signed, and this is not something that's typical at Griffin. But we're going to continue to work diligently to get this solved as soon as we can. All right. Next comes public comment. We have a number of people that have signed up online on the Google document. I believe, do we have the sign up sheet from when people walked in? There's a number of folks that have signed up there. If there's anybody that...
Unless you were thinking of signing us to speak.
Okay, so there's no, okay. And then we may have some people online. So again, everybody, we need to work together this evening to make sure that everybody has an opportunity to be heard. I'll speak towards our public comment before we get moving. If I feel like we have to gavel to quiet the crowd down, it's going to be this pleasant sound. And hopefully, we can lighten the mood if we need to with that, too. As far as public comment goes, this is an opportunity for visitors to be recognized and make brief comments. We have a sign up sheet. For those who wish to speak, this allows us to call on you one at a time. If, if we have members of the public who are attending remotely and would like to speak, please raise your hand and we will, we will call on you. General reminders: Each speaker has a maximum of three minutes. There's no mechanism whereby a speaker can donate some or all of their time to another speaker. No individual may speak more than once per public comment session. I want to remind everybody that in our board meetings, we typically offer a second public comment session later in the meeting. The meat of the meeting is going to be fairly quick, so that might come around fairly quick, too, after the first one. Public comment period is an opportunity for the board to listen to individuals on educational issues and the board members will listen attentively. However, public comment period is not a time for dialogue between the board and the public. The board will not respond to statements, questions, and there will be no back and forth dialogue. Please know that the board silence is neutral. It is neither a signal of agreement nor disagreement with the speaker's remarks. Although the board will not engage in dialogue, any one of our board directors may ask a speaker a clarifying question. It is also possible that school district staff will contact a speaker at a later time to follow up on an issue related, raised during public comment. Finally, please remember that your words have impact and you're responsible for your own comments. In any case, we ask that you help us model for our students what a respectful and inclusive community looks and sounds like. Thank you. All right. Emma, are you ready?
Yes, I have the list. As Brad said, we have two periods to comment. So when I call out your names, if you'd like to defer to the second period, let us know. And I'm also going to be in charge of timing today. So first up, we have Joanna Dowler.
I'm Joanna Dowler, the newly elected Department of Education Association president. My main job is to make sure our contract is upheld when I'm speaking on behalf of our members. I had a three and a half hour meeting with our new interim superintendent, Mr. Reed, on Tuesday, July 25th. Interim superintendent Reed informed me that she'd be telling the board to vote no on our bargain contract. Her reasons being that our asking for a librarian or a teacher was illegal. I've checked with our union representatives and they say it is not illegal. She has also told us she didn't want to pay, she told me she didn't want to pay for us. The 3.7% cost of living the state was giving on the teachers. The 3.7% is not a bargain item this year. It says in our current contract on page 40, any new monies provided by the state for cost of living adjustments are automatically applied to our schedule. The board directed our previous superintendent, Greg Woods, to negotiate our contract for the 2023-24 year before he left in June 30th. We bargained with our usual collaborative and student-focused manner. GEA members wanted improvements to the services and educational environment of Griffin students and we accomplished that. We completed the bargain and the teachers voted unanimously in favor of the new addition to our contract on June 28th. The district posted a librarian in our position soon afterwards because the board's ratifying the new contract has always just been a formality. Interim superintendent Reed wanted us to meet with her to renegotiate our bargain contract along with other items in our current contract. We are not allowed to do this for our collective bargaining protocols and we explained this to interim superintendent Reed. We have enforced the file for the first time during my tenure as president and unfair labor practice was perked because not ratifying our contract is bad faith bargaining. We are also in the process of filing multiple grievances at this time. Here's an example of one. Two of our teachers will be on maternity leave this year. They worked out a plan with the school district for this new school year. The board even approved that plan in June, but now they're being told it's illegal and they can't do it. Again, our union's union strongly disagrees with this. This is creating a lot of stress and hardship for these two teachers. As long as I've been president, we have not had to file unfair labor practice or multiple grievances because I was able to go to our previous administration and point out to them when they weren't following our contract. The district would stop what they were doing and it didn't turn into an argument. There were also times when the administration came to me first for clarification to make sure we wouldn't have an issue, which I appreciated. This is all going to cost the district money to argue with us about following the correct bargaining procedures and violating our contract. Why is our contract being disrespected? All the teachers want is to teach our students. Instead, they're stressed out and worried. Our contract is there to make sure teachers are working in a safe, equitable environment. Right now, there's a lot of mistrust and fear. This is not about teachers being afraid of change, this is about good leadership. Good leadership fosters trust and respect and helps people improve themselves and become inspired. Thank you.
Up next, we have Melissa Cushman-Gavara.
One second, please.
Okay, all right. Next up is Joshua Gavara.
I'll defer to him.
Okay. Kelly Anderson.
I'll defer to the second.
Okay. Jason Richter.
I'm kind of stuck, so maybe I'll do this from here. I just wanted to give a quick thank you to the school, the staff, and the board. For a couple of years, I've been coaching a boys soccer team and we've been practicing out there. So I've got fifth and sixth grade boys, most of whom are Griffon boys. And we wanted to say thank you all for letting us practice here. It's great for the kids. Parents like not being in the rain.
Okay, thank you. Next up, Kelsey Adams and Kami McGregor.
In the spring of last year, we worked with superintendent Woods, Kim Barrett, and Rebecca Kaiser to develop a job share plan that works for the district and our families and makes sense for students. The plan to share a kindergarten class, working two full days a week, alternating Wednesdays, was approved by Griffin School Board in June. We both were very excited about getting to work together and continuously to positively impact Griffin kids while also being more present in our own children's formative years. Last week, at one week postpartum and three weeks away from giving birth, we were both informed that interim superintendent Reed does not approve of the plan previously agreed upon with the district. We were told that working full days while being deemed half-time employees is not legal. However, the facts are that we have teacher colleagues in surrounding districts, Olympia School District, and Tomahawk School District working with exact arrangements that we have been approved for.
Upon district approval in June, we immediately made personal and professional plans according to this job share agreement. We met several times over the summer, planning for our future classroom together to ensure we're on the same page about everything and give our students a consistent, loving, and productive kindergarten experience. We have arranged child care for the days that we were set to work and did not find care for the days that we planned to be home with our children. Now, instead of focusing on getting our classroom ready, preparing subplans for maternity leave, and making sure the year gets off to a great start for our childrens, we are scrambling to adjust our personal plans, trying to find additional care for our children in which most places in the area have months to years-long waiting lists. In addition, with the new proposed plan, we both would need to collaborate and sort out details with whomever our other half-time teacher is, which is work we've already accomplished together. This has created a lot of unnecessary stress for both of us, on the teaching side and the personal side, all at a time that should be a really exciting and special time in our lives as our families are expanding. We appreciate you listening to our concerns and understanding how these unnecessary changes being made by the district are impacting our mental health and the ability to do our job to the high standard we hold ourselves to. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Michelle Odell.
I'll be first.
That's it for the list.
Okay. Can we check online? Yeah, let's go ahead and check on Zoom. If anybody in Zoom wants to speak right now, please raise your Zoom hand. Don't see anybody, okay. Is there anybody else in the room right now that did not sign up prior or when you walked in the door that would like to speak towards the board right now? Okay.
I can speak in a second.
Yes, sir. What's your name?
Patrick Pulli.
Patrick Pulli. Thank you.
I might want to say something in the second one.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody?
Thank you. Sadie Tilson.
Sadie Tilson? Okay. Okay, moving on. Tab two. Consent agenda. I would entertain a motion to approve our consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Moved by Emma, second by Trish. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. Tab three, student learning. There are no, nothing on the agenda. Tab four, old business, nothing's on the agenda. Tab five, new business, we have nothing on the agenda. Tab six, district reports. Finance director's report from Kim.
Thank you, Brett. Senior packet, you've been providing the financial statement for the month of July. I don't close the month of August until it is forthcoming. I will be getting work done on getting ready to fill the book because I've been working on the last of our fiscal year. And so I would encourage you to stay tuned for your end reports. Any questions?
Not for me, from anybody at the board? No? Quick and concise, Kim, thank you. That brings us to superintendent's report. I believe superintendent Reed's on Zoom.
I am. I have prepared some comments today just to clear the air and provide clarity, all of which I can substantiate and validate with evidence and not thoughts. So I'm just going to read it to you. On July 17th is when I started. At that time, I reached out to multiple community members and staff to have one-to-one sit-down meetings to get to know persons. And only about four people have responded. I appreciate those that have responded and I actually enjoyed our conversations. I have only to date met, met two teachers, only one I have spoken with, and that's Ms. Dowler and a few community members. The other teacher I met in passing, it was higher by. I say that to say that no one outside of those people have shaken my hand, had a conversation with me, or could put me out of a crowd. Disheartening to be, this is disheartening to be a new to a community and have this be the welcome I've received with the lies that follow. There is a contract issue that has been made a bigger issue than one would think, considering the only request that the district remained, made was that illegal language be removed that disenfranchised kids. I have never at any time spoken to what the board would say because I can't speak to the board and I have never argued the 3.7% raise because we don't provide that as a district. That's provided for the state, so everyone received that. This has no bearing on anything. And also, I never meet with people one-on-one without my assistant for this very reason. She has notes of the meeting and so do I, which can be provided if requested. All of this is happening when I'm standing in the gap to make sure that the district doesn't continue to face litigation for special education manners, matters. Specifically, the contract says teachers and educators can diagnose students with a history of behavior as exceptional, as exceptional students, which is a label, i.e. special education. That is a legal medical diagnosis that we do not have the credentials to diagnose. And it is also a legal diagnosis as far as sped, and it's called emotionally-behaviorally disabled. So I'm not sure how many of the community members think that it's okay for a teacher to diagnose and identify their child as a student with a disability because they exhibit distress manifested as behavior. What's sadder is while I'm advocating to make sure that your kids aren't disenfranchised, members of the community have launched an all-out lynching on me, a black woman, without even knowing why you're lynching me. There are posts on Facebook which blatantly say, "You don't know why, but you need to show up." No one stopped to ask the question, "Why?" No one has called me, written me, sent a smoke signal, or sent the Batman sign to say anything to me. Here's the facts. The district's made several attempts to communicate with the GEA board. They refused to communicate with me, have not responded to one email inviting them to do what the district and the board has requested and to, that's just to remove the illegal language. Instead, they've avoided me, going around me, even removing me from emails that I have initiated to go to my white colleagues, ignoring protocol, going directly to the two white male board members, slandering me when no one outside of one of them has ever heard me even speak. And they've incited an all-out attack by the community based on pure lies and ambiguity. I've been disrespected, minimized, dehumanized, discriminated against, retaliated against with the use of frivolous unsubstantiated grievances. The district also filed a perk for a perk mediator and that was done on August 11th. I would encourage you to ask the association when they file theirs. I have been in touch with this perk mediator as early as today and she's in the process of moving. The process was not completed accurately. There is agreement of that. And all I asked is that the illegal language be removed. I have been referred to as being intimidated by people who've never spoken to me. You've never seen anything of me other than picture of me on Facebook and I'm not sure what is so intimidating about someone standing on their front porch with a welcome sign to their left and a wreath over their head with a dress that I got from Nordstrom's and it was on sale. I don't know, outside of that, other than the color of my skin, what could be considered intimidating? Teachers have been made to believe that I have expressed that, they have, that they have expressed that they are in a hostile work environment when I'm not there and they've never heard from me and they've never talked to me. But let's hit, let's hit history and statistics. Historically, white people are, are and always have been a bigger threat to me than I will ever be to them. Hence, just look around you at the number of people who joined a lynching with no proof or evidence and no one asked why. These are all behaviors that are discriminating and clearly reflect how everyone in that community feels about me and how they've allowed their stereotypical beliefs of black women to perpetuate a narrative that is just not true. I'm the one that's in a hostile work environment. The community has sadly joined in, even though they don't know why. And all I would like to impart upon you as simple humans is be careful what you allow your good names and reputations to be associated with without having the evidence. It is time to do a moral compass check in your, what we call in our southern community, a shana na. You need to check that and ask yourself, "Why?" Another thing that was said on Facebook, the equity plan on the website was a plot by me. So for clarity, the equity plan on the website has been there for two years. At the bottom of it, it dictates who was at that table. My name is not present because two years ago I was not there. Here's the facts. The presence of a blacks, the presence of a black superintendent made people look at the website where they found an equity plan and they immediately attributed that to the new black girl. When in fact, I can't think of one thing black and brown people have gained from any equity policy or law. And if this is what that equity policy looks like in action, enough said. You can take it down. It's not a big deal for me because it does nothing for me. So here's the gossip on so-called big changes that are occurring. I have not changed anything other than what is in alignment with state law in following that. I added FTE for an ed tech and librarian, a Spanish teacher, two registered behavior therapists, a BCBA to supervise them, a library paralegal professional. I have provided funding to ensure that every eighth grader in the district is allowed to take the PSAT in October like every other eighth grader in the state. I've put in place an instructional infrastructure and framework, which is required by OSP, OSPI. I've implemented a, the teaching of curriculum with fidelity, which is a requirement for our categorical funding, which simply states, "We must supplement, not supplant." That's it. And if any parent or community member is not in agreement with their student receiving a higher quality teaching and learning experience, please get in touch with your principal and select to opt out and we will honor that. I have a question. When your students did not have those things, where was the crowd then? Where was the mob then? When kids did not get what they received in a community as beautiful as Steamboat, where was everybody then? Why didn't we ask questions then? And as history repeats itself, let me tell you a little story. In 1955, a 14-year-old boy visiting family in Mississippi was accused of whistling at a white young lady by the name of Carolyn Brony. That night, he was abducted from his home, lynched, tied to a metal fan that was turned on. He was then thrown into a body of water where he was found. A few years ago, that young lady was on her deathbed and she admitted that she had lied. A lie that cost someone's kid their life. What's sad is not just that he lost his life, but that well-meaning people that knew the truth remained silent and allowed the injustice to carry out. Today, here I am, like that young man, innocent of what's been accused. Yet the masses have joined the mob, moving to abduct me, take me to Steamboat Square, lynch me, beat me to a bloody pulp, hanging me in a tree, and torching my body like strange fruit without a second thought and no one questioned why. I will receive this as my official Griffin rest. Received. I cannot discuss individual personnel leave, but I can say that Board Policy 5222 outlines the process, which was not followed, and it also states where the district authority lies. I will repeat that. Board Policy 5222. The district is not denying anyone their federal rights to leave. Job sharing is authorized by the district and is allowed to happen, which is in the best interest of kids. It is not in the best interest of kids to have a new teacher in a kindergarten class every other day where they are learning to do school. So I say all of that to say, I have done what I have been hired to do. I have been kind. I have been welcoming. I have impersonable. I have overextended myself. But I will not continue to be kicked in the face while you ask me to rub your feet while you do it. This is ridiculous. It is embarrassing. Teachers are not in agreement with them. There are teachers that don't want to be involved because they're embarrassed. And I will tell you straight up, I have met some really kind people in Steamboat. Absolutely lovely people. The restaurant across the street, Character's, has the best blue cheese burger I have ever had in my life. I love it. And what saddens me is that we, the good people of a community, will allow dissenting voices to prevail and tell our story. This is the narrative of your community being told. And unless you speak up and speak truth to power, this is what, it's fair that everyone that looks like me thinks. I am clear that I am unwanted in that community. I am clear that people like me and look like me are unwanted in that community. And if that be the case, and that, wait a minute, if that's not the case, I need people to stand up and quiet the rest. Do not allow lies to prevail. I am available by email. My cell phone number is not a secret. You can reach out to Kelly for a one-to-one. I will extend that again and again and again. And I'm going to ask you to ask for these things to be substantiated to you in writing. I can do that. So I leave you with that and I hope if nothing else comes of this, we understand not to continue allowing people to tell our story and to check our moral compass and why we are so free and willing to join a mob behind something we know nothing about. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Superintendent Reed. Let's take a five-minute recess. And in that period of time, if anybody would like to add it to the second public comment list, that will be immediately what's following, okay? All right. So we're going to reconvene at 10 to 6. That worked? Good.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. I appreciate everybody coming back to attention and listen. I appreciate everybody coming back to attention and listen with the nice pleasant ringing of the bell. Well, I think we might institute this. We are now through tab six, and we were to our second session of public comment. Emma is going to work through three different lists. That is an online list, a Zoom attendees list, and then an in-person list. Remember, from our, my original introduction to public comment, we're going to keep it to three minutes, and we're going to try to move through as fast and respectfully as we can. Yes, ma'am? Thank you. Can we check real quick? Okay, thank you. All right, Emma?
Okay. And clarification, if you did not sign up but still want to speak at the end, and we have time, we'll just ask at the end if anybody else would like to speak first. Okay, so we'll come back to the list we started with, which is Melissa Cushman-Gavara.
Hello, hi. My name is Melissa. I'm here as a parent at Griffin School. I came because I wanted to make sure that I was in the room, and I knew what was happening. Because a couple of days ago, I saw some things on Facebook that were a little concerning. So I just, I wanted to make sure that I was here. I did not know anything about the interim superintendent. I knew nothing about her at all. So I was not here because of her presence at all. And I just think it's important that the community is part of the conversation because the way things have been going in education, it's kind of troubling. Not so much recently here, but I don't like seeing schools used as pawns. So I just need to make sure that, you know, that I'm in the room. So that's why I'm here.
Next up, we have Joshua Gavara.
Same kind of thing. I was here to speak up about something that might have been brought up, seeing kind of like what happened in the beginning of this meeting. That's probably not going to be brought up, so I don't feel the need to speak on that. And we're new to the community. We just moved up here a little over a year ago. Want to be more involved in the community because we tend not to leave. In fact, I've already stated to several people that my ashes are going to be spread in my front yard because I'm not buying another house. I attend more meetings to get to kind of know what's going on around here, be more involved if I can. I've been a teacher for 15 years. So, and I've also, also that I've been teaching actually at the alternative high school level, so I'm very kind of experienced with very diverse communities, diverse students. So I just want my voice to be heard a little bit more in my community. So thank you. Thank you guys for meeting everybody today.
Okay. Okay, next up, Kelly Anderson.
I just have some bullets. I'm Kelly Anderson. I've worked in Griffin School District for 21 years. I've rarely missed a board meeting. I don't think I've missed out too, maybe. I would like to think that everybody's here to welcome our new superintendent Felisa Reed, but we all know that's not the case. It's amazing to me that one very unclear Facebook post garnered 156 comments from community members, parents, Griffin staff, et cetera, and resulted in your attendance at tonight's meeting. I don't recall a Griffin School District or Griffin School Facebook post that has ever received that much attention, and these posts are about our kids. Anyone can attend a board meeting at any time. They're open to the public and not just when there's controversy. I've never seen anyone have to work so hard to do the right thing for kids and receive this amount of blatant disrespect, exclusion, and discrimination. Call it what you want. Felisa is a person just like us. She has kids. She has mouths to feed, bills to pay. She feels emotions. She's going through tragedy. This is a new position for her, and she's relocating. She has life things happening, just like we all do. So far, from what I've seen, Felisa takes all of this in stride and continues to do the work that's best for kids. She's knowledgeable and experienced in her field of work. I've filled several calls from my colleagues from WASTA and WASSA and OSPI, welcoming her to the district and sharing how confident and how lucky we are to have Felisa in our district. I'm 100 in support of Felisa Reed as our superintendent, not an interim, as our superintendent. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next up, Michelle Odell.
Thank you. Dr. Reed, I hope you're still up there. I can't see. I don't have my glasses on. But I just want to say thank you. What you've said opened my eyes to a lot of different things. Specifically, verbiage that really was disturbing to hear. And I just want to clarify with the board that that is not in the contract where you can diagnose my kid who might have a behavior. That is really disturbing to me. So I was going to say other things, but that caught my attention, and I'm really worried about that. So I hope that's not in the contract, okay? As a special needs parent, and most of you know who I am, well, maybe not, but if you were on Facebook, you know who I am. I also want to thank you for your courage to speak up. As an advocate myself for my son and all kids with special needs in our schools, I advocate at the state level. I advocate in DC, and I want to thank you for standing up and speaking out. You give me, you inspire me to be a better advocate and use my voice for what I stand for. And I stand for special education, and I stand, this is my topic tonight, I stand for inclusive schooling. I really do. I think it's important. Every kid learns differently. And it doesn't exclude our kids that are intellectually or developmentally delayed. They actually also have a brain, and they can think, and they can talk if they can talk when they have an AAC device. Please offer those. Please train on those. Let these kids be heard because they have a voice. And they do have behaviors because that's their communication. And I so appreciate the fact that you have talked about, and I hope it goes to fruition, two behavior specialists in a BCBA to oversee them. That is music to my ears. When I've asked for that in the past, they didn't have funding for that. That is what I was told. So if you're finding funding for that, God bless you, and I thank you for that. I will always advocate for special education, special education teachers, parent educators, speech therapists, occupational therapists, physical therapists. I have your back, but please don't type into my kid, okay? Thank you. I hope it ends over three minutes.
Okay. Next up, I'm going to go to the people who signed on the list, and then we'll go to the people who raised their hand. So on the list, if you've already spoken, I'm just going to ask if you'd like to speak again. Joanna Dollar, folks, because I'm interested in speaking with them. Okay. All right. And Kelsey Adams. Okay, thank you. Next up, Tanisha Smith.
Hi, everybody. Tanisha Smith, I'm a fourth grade teacher, and I'm doing my administrative internship right now with Ms. Kaiser. I wasn't actually going to speak tonight. I was just going to be here to be present, but after hearing Ms. Reed's statement, I think it's important that everybody knows that there were people that reached out to her. I reached out to her following the July 26 board meeting, and I'm going to read you the email that I sent her. I said, "So nice to meet you." That was my subject line. "Not that you needed one more email, but I just wanted to reach out and say it was so nice to meet you in person." "I wanted to come in and introduce myself, but I also understood that you have had to truly hit the ground running." "So I wanted to allow you the space to do that. "I truly look forward to working with you this upcoming year, and I hope to learn a lot from you and your experience. "I just want you to know that if there's anything I can do to help, I would be happy to do so. "I'm very driven and excited about digging into the administrative side of things. "On a more personal note, I'm sorry for your loss, especially it's such a big transition for you. "I hope you have time to take care of yourself and your family during this period. "Thank you for your time." I didn't get a response. I was okay with that. I understood. She had things that she had to do. I understood that completely. Following that email, I had one interaction with her that I was told, based on our current contract, that I am in the bottom group, and six to seven employees at the end of the school year would be let go. And I was in that group. I have since looked. As far as Washington State certified experience goes, I'm eighth. As far as years at Griffin goes, I'm 17th. So that feels threatening to me. That feels like a threat. So that's it. Just wanted to share that there's more to the story than what is being said.
Okay, next up, I'm going to call Julie Nichols.
Hi, everybody. I know most of you, I'm Julie Nichols. I have an eighth grader and a sixth grader. I'm incoming PTO president. I walked into this whole room, and I think I was as shocked as many of you. I do feel like, I signed up to talk because I think there's a big misunderstanding about why most of us are here. I'm not a Facebooker. I kind of wish it didn't exist. I am friends with many of these teachers. We all are. Our kids play sports together. We are all running in the same circles. We all care about each other. That's what's so great about this community. I am here because two teachers asked me to be here. And if that happens, guess what? I don't care what day of summer it is, I'll change my entire plan. The accusation that we are here because we are knowingly engaging in mob mentality is offensive and makes me want to cry. So that's a big assumption. That's a big misunderstanding, and I think that that has to be cleared up. I provided two dates that I would be available to meet with our new superintendent. I was excited to meet with her. That was three weeks ago, and I haven't heard anything back. I hope that still occurs. I think that those personal meetings are really important. We are all used to talking to each other, meeting in person. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Austin Grove.
Hi, I'm Austin Grove. I started late tonight because I was dropping my son at sports. This is my first board meeting to attend because I'm the one taking care of kids at night while my wife is at board meetings, PTO meetings, and everything else. So I just have a couple of things. We have collectively been involved in board meetings and reviewing meeting minutes and everything. We reached out to ask for the meeting minutes from June, and we're stonewalled and stonewalled and stonewalled and still do not have the meeting minutes that are required to be available to the public. And so that's a big concern. If there is stonewalling, if there's people that are saying, hey, we don't want you involved, that collectively here, I look around the room, and I see teachers that our kids have had, that I love. They love. And these are not racist people. These are not fagot people. These are not whatever labels that we want to put on people. There are so many labels out there now that you're either this or this. And we have to be able to come together as a collective and not see each other as enemies to be able to move forward and get things done. We want the board to be empowered to do great things. We want this school to be great. I don't know whose responsibility for the hiring, the meeting minutes aren't available. And so that's a frustration that I need the board to know is that we're not here against you. And I hope you guys aren't here against us. There's one candidate that has signed a pledge to put the power at the school level and not include parents. That's extremely concerning when parents love their kids. We're here to support each other and love each other and help and move everyone forward. Thank you.
All right. Okay. Next, I'm going back to my written list. So that would be Patrick Pulli.
My name is Patrick Pulli, and I've been in the Griffin community for nine years now. I, along with what I said earlier, I knew nothing about meetings before I came. I just, we had some friends who are teachers who have asked us to come and thought that it would be great for us to get to meet the new superintendent. What I've witnessed in the time that I've been here validates every fear that I've secretly held inside with the announcement of Greg Wood's resignation. Not that Greg is some superhero or anything, but you become accustomed to quality and you become accustomed to the way things are after a longevity of years. And whenever there's a change in leadership, it brings about, not necessarily fear, but it brings about this anxiousness about what's to come. And that's how I've been feeling. And I'm just going to be blunt. I was trying to capture my comments. I don't speak out very often. I have very strong convictions about things, but I personally choose not to necessarily jump into the public spectrum very often. But the behavior of our interim, and I want to repeat our interim superintendent during her comments earlier were, in my opinion, reprehensible and outright alarming. I've heard race and skin color from both during her comments more times than I've heard in nine years in the Griffin community. These comments are clearly made from a position that has no bearing on the quality of our community or the people that she is engaging with. And they, to me, reveal every red flag and symptom possible of someone who is insecure as a leader and completely unprepared to lead in the role that she's been hired to lead within. From this behavior that I've seen and witnessed, I don't believe or have confidence that what we are seeing with contract negotiations, with qualitative communication, that it will actually improve. So I'm for our school board to take note of this moment because everybody here is taking note of it. And I was shocked by, and sure, people can be defensive, but I was shocked by just the lack of candid leadership qualities and sincerity in the comments that were on the screen from our new superintendent. I love this school. I could homeschool anytime we wanted to, but we choose to not isolate ourselves, but to be involved in the engagement of community. Our teachers here, they're a part of our community. I look around the room, I see dozens of faces that we know and have come to love over the years. And by golly, I'm going to be honest with you. It's, what I witnessed has the ability to tear it all down. And I cannot sit by and let this happen. So I'm here. I'm here to support whatever needs to get supported to bring about positivity in our school and move forward.
All right. Next up is Colleen, and I didn't catch your last. Thank you.
I also didn't show up here for the new superintendent. I also do not have Facebook, do not have any social media. So I don't know any of that garbage you're spewing. And the hateful rhetoric that you spewed towards the community and sitting there eating popcorn on the screen, we see you. We hear you as the community. You're going to represent our children? Shame on you for doing that. Very hurtful. You're hurting our teachers that we love so very much. That's all I have to say about that. That was ridiculous to come here and say we're lynching. Good heavens. Please vote her out, and know who you're voting for, folks. Elections have consequences. Know this.
Sadie Telfen?
My husband is the one that's supposed to be on Facebook. Mostly because, same thing as you. We have multiple teachers in this district that we just love and adore, and we've supported for so long. Their kids, first and foremost, are one of the most important people in this place. So if they're upset, and we have a new superintendent, it doesn't matter what label that we put on it. She's a new superintendent coming into a district that is a very tight-knit district that's made this school so special for all of you. So show up because we have teachers that are scared. We have, like Ms. Anderson, you had said, like in your bullet points, that you feel like we aren't showing up here. However, you've emailed me also and her. However, you've emailed me also and her for a meeting. And I've reached for that twice and I've gotten nothing back, just like June, just like multiple people here. So it's so unfair and it's so dangerous for the same people coming out. And we have to show up to hear these things because the teachers can't carry on. It's two weeks to school to go.
Okay, Carrie Blankenship on Zoom. You're muted, Carrie. There you go.
Thank you. I work with Griffin School District and I have for, I'm coming into my fifth year now, behind the scenes in a variety of roles. I've done contracting work, working on improving systems of support for our students. And I worked this last year as your special education director. There has been a lack of leadership in Griffin School District that was removed in June. Ask your building principals what it feels like to be empowered to lead their building with someone behind them supporting them. Ask your teachers what it feels like, what your kids feel like when we're going to close that 30% gap that has kept your kids with disabilities at the very bottom of performance and never growing and achieving at the same rate as their peers. There has been time after time where I have presented solutions and opportunities and data to the leadership of this school with no change. I created a plan with Rebecca Kaiser, Erin Hagan and Kim Farah last year to bring in new teachers into special ed, to bring in highly qualified skills that we need to help reform instruction and make Griffin more inclusive. It went through, we sold it, we put together a proposal, we made it happen. Ms. Reed showed up the very first day I met with her. She said, Carrie, you tell me what you need to make it happen and I will make it happen. She is committed to making sure our kids succeed and that the kids who have been most marginalized and dis-served in this system excel and grow and have opportunities. They have been slighted, they have been ignored, and that's changing. And I am so thankful. We all felt in June that we were finally on this hill that we were cresting over and that a whole new land of possibilities laid in front of us because we were going to be able to have the resources we needed to serve our kids. When Ms. Reed came on, I was elated to read her profile. The day I met her, she was sitting in the office. She had gotten a phone call that morning that her father had died. She did not cancel her meeting with me. She did not cut it short. She spent the entire time with me, hearing me out, discussing the problems, talking about what needed to happen. She left shortly thereafter to attend to family matters that come with the passing of a parent. She has been available to me every single time I have emailed, every single time I have called. She is not back yet. We will be meeting when she gets back. She is the leader that we need in this building. She is going to hold people accountable for this, for the strain of demand that is going to reform this school district. And it needs to happen. It needs to happen. But you know what happens when you come in and you put expectations on people and you expect them to follow it? They don't like it. And that has gone on for decades at Griffin with the former leadership. She is strong. It's a different cultural approach, but she is the woman we need in this position and she means well.
Thank you, Carrie. Rebecca Graham.
Okay, can you hear me? I want to say thank you to Dr. Reed for sharing everything that you shared. And I am here tonight because there was a lot of racist rhetoric that was going on online. And the folks that I hear saying, I didn't come because I don't have Facebook, I came because of a teacher. Well, maybe there is a problem. And the problem is racism in our community. She just shared everything, you know, from her heart and backed it up with real data, backed it up with what she's doing for kids that are under the special education umbrella and how they had been underserved in the Griffin community. And yet people come saying, this is about love, this is about love. Well, I heard Dr. Reed state facts and I just heard the woman before state facts about what we can do to actually make change in the community in a better way, in a more positive way. I hope that folks tonight, especially the white folks around here, go home and take a nice hard look in the mirror and think about the big emotions you're feeling right now and why you are feeling those emotions.
Is there anybody else on Zoom? Okay. We've gone through our lists. Is there anybody else in the room this evening that would like to speak?
There is someone who raised their hand on Zoom.
Another one, that's Robyn.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Your Zoom handle says Robyns. Would you like to speak?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
I was on the Equity Board a few years ago while my son attended Griffin. And basically I had brought, you know, a lot of concern in regards to diversity at Griffin. If you look at the makeup of the teachers and the administrators at Griffin, I only saw one African-American female that was there the entire time my son went to school there, from K through eighth grade. And so I advocated for more diversity at the school. Have I seen that since? No. So if you look around the room there, you will see that the majority of teachers and the majority of administrators have always been white. And so to come and say that the DEI that was put together with so many hours by so many people that were invested in seeing DEI measures at Griffin, we are still so far from being there. And the way that I have heard the treatment of the new interim superintendent, I am so flabbergasted. How does a community like Steamboat, which is supposed to be a nurturing community, a community that embraces individuals, possibly not diverse individuals, but they show kindness? And I have not seen that at Griffin over the time that I was there. And so once I found out that there was an interim superintendent that was diverse, I thought Griffin was definitely taking measures to add more diversity to the school. However, I see that is not the case. So I asked the board and the committee what they're going to be doing to move forward to show diversity at Griffin. Thank you.
Is there anybody else on Zoom that we may have missed? Looks like we threw everybody. And there was, okay.
Can I ask a quick clarifying question? Your name on there is Robyn, but we don't know your first name. Would you please introduce yourself? Sorry, our last speaker.
Yes, I was on the Equity Committee a couple of years ago. My name is Jan Robyn.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we had a couple hands raised. Yeah, you were first.
My name is Christine. I came to this meeting because my son is going to be starting middle school this year. And I was told by this teacher last year there was going to be some structural changes throughout the middle school this year. I was curious about them, so I decided to attend my first board meeting. I've never actually come to one. I've always felt like my child was in good hands here at Griffin. It seems like it's always been a great school. We've been going here for a long time. I also read about Ms. Reed being a new superintendent. Again, fear of the unknown, you just don't know. We've had Mr. Woods here for so long, we're just used to it. But I'm open to new people. I'm open to everybody in this room. What I'm not open to is coming to a board meeting very innocently, just trying to see what's going on with the middle school and being accused of being an attendance or a lynching or a lynch mob or any kind of racism mark that have been presented here today. I am not racist and I treat people the way they deserve to be treated, no matter what color you are, where you came from. I don't care. And this is what I teach my son. And I'm now going to have my son come here in a couple of weeks with someone like that for a leader accusing us of being something that we are not. I take that very seriously. I am very offended that this is what's coming to a board meeting that I have attended, just curious about how the year is going to go for my son. And then I see all these people over here that are concerned and I wonder why they are concerned. I didn't come here to talk about racism or mobbing or lynching. And I am not any kind of person who would ever do that. And I do not appreciate being accused of that personally. And I don't know of anybody here who may have come for that. If you have, feel free to speak up. But I see a lot of concerned parents, a lot of concerned community members. And we didn't come here for that. I don't appreciate being accused of that myself. And I don't want my child being accused of that either when he comes to the school. Just that's it.
Christine, sorry, can you share your last name? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lindsay Pulli. I've got a daughter that came out of prison and I've got two boys that are in fifth and eighth this year. I am 100% not opposed to change. And I think that there are massive areas of growth that Griffin's full needs that I think none of us are being blind to. I just want to share my own personal experience. I work in early intervention for the local lead agency, the Rose City Free. I work with communication delayed kiddos. I am 150% in favor of any and ever change being made to the point where these kiddos are getting the support that they need. They're provided with a staff that is educated and equipped to work their AAC device. We've all been in favor of that. I can assure you, this entire room is in favor of that. What I am not in favor of is the exact thing that she just said. It's coming tonight and being accused of being unwelcome while we would love an invite to get to know you. I would love a one-on-one or a two-on-one with my husband. We would love to meet you. We would love to hear your story. We're from the South as well. I would love to hear what makes you you. But we did not come here tonight for a lynching whatsoever. We came here as concerned parents to hear about what this school year brings. We don't think Griffin is perfect at all. I do think that there is room for growth. I think that any of us would say that. But what we also are is we are really, really proud of this community. We're not proud of the people who are racist. We're not proud of the people who are outspoken on Facebook and are strolled behind their computer. We're not proud of that. And a lot of those people are actually not here tonight. We want to welcome you to this community because we love our community. We love our school, we love our staff. But you have to give us the opportunity to actually welcome you in a kind way, in a nice way. You have to respond to the emails, invite more people than what you've invited to get to come into your office and sit down, hear our hearts, hear what we struggle with, what our students are struggling with in the classroom and not judge a book by its cover because this goes both ways. I am in favor of change. I am in favor of getting these students the support that they need. We do have kids falling through the cracks, specifically that are communication delayed, but there is a bigger story to it than what you have painted tonight.
Okay. Oh, thanks. Oh, is she on a different?
I don't see her at all.
Is there another screen?
Was she on the phone?
She was at earlier.
Okay, we'll take a moment and try to figure this out.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me? Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, 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 we can. Thank you.
Thank you. My apologies. I'm at the top of Mount Rushmore, well, almost. Zooming into this meeting because I feel that it's that important. My name is Wendy Potkin-Jack. I'm a fifth grade teacher. And I wanted to speak to the several emails that I've received over the summer asking to meet with Ms. Reed. And those were in July. I was not available. And then the school was shut down. Our school has never been shut to the staff over the summer to be able to come in and work at their liberties, to prepare their classroom for students to show up the day one. I'm appalled at the number of emails that were sent out to multiple people who do not even exist as staff at our school. And the information that was referenced in those emails about our contract, about this language, and those people are ex-employees, ex-substitutes, ex-paras, parents. I don't even know some of the people. I've worked there nine years. I went there, my kids went there, go here where Griffin. I love teaching at Griffin. I was hugely appalled at the email that I heard she sent to our bargaining team on Monday when we met. Yes, I zoomed into another meeting on Monday. That's not how I wanted to meet my new leadership. I looked forward to meeting her next week at the two days, which I thought we had three. And now I'm scared. Now I'm nervous. Now I don't know what to do. Thank you for letting me speak tonight.
Okay. Last call for public comment. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Peyton Milligan. I know lots of you as neighbors. I also know lots of you as my educators, when I have a student here. And I know lots of you as my kids' educators. And so my encouragement to all of us is for us to try and come together as a community. We all love Griffin, whether it's because we went to Griffin because we live out here and love this kind of stuff or whether it's because we have friends who are educators. And so my encouragement is, there's a lot of heat in this room and on social and a variety of other forums, right? But let's all try and come together as a community that we are because we are a very great place to live. Griffin is a great school to go to personally, to send kids to. And we have an opportunity to continue its greatness in new ways or maybe it has fallen short in the past. Those are my encouragement. Thank you to the school board for allowing such a large attendance tonight and so much opportunity for public comment. And to Dr. Reed, Ms. Reed for coming in. I'm sure this has been a really, really challenging environment and time and I'm sorry for your personal loss. I also want you to feel welcome. And I would just encourage you to give our community a chance to welcome you in a way that you feel welcome, but also we would like you to welcome us too. That's all. Thank you.
Yeah?
Really quickly, again, seeing new to this community. Obviously, there was a lot of discommunication going on with the transfer. A lot of feel for Dr. Reed. Sounds like she was going through a lot while trying to do a new position and trying to bring in a lot. I just want to say from an outside point of view, this meeting did seem really one-sided against one person. I just wanted to make sure that, we kind of come from this understanding that we categorize us as a mob, but it was definitely one-sided in my opinion. So I wanted to say.
Hi, I'm Jay McColliver. I actually just moved.
Hold on a second.
We're good. Actually, it's new to this community. My daughter will be coming here next year. And I have worked in higher education, so seeing a flip of administration is always hard. And everyone is emotionally invested in your child's life. When it comes to these situations, though, you sometimes have to separate yourself and look at the facts. I, myself, am kind of getting emotional for you guys because it is hard. You trust these people with your children. But when they leave your house and they leave the school, you have to understand that they have to be prepared for the world that's out there. And if she is doing and taking the steps to help prepare your children, yes, not everyone's going to like it. And yes, it kind of has, I am a white person, okay? I'm white all around. My children are white. But I work with individuals that are people of color and these are situations they deal with in smaller capacities. So she is bringing forth something that maybe you guys don't see because the majority of us are white in here. And it's nothing against you, your family. And none of you obviously are like, hey, I'm a token racist because that is what you guys are not saying, which is great and makes me feel amazing to let my daughter come here where you guys are openly fighting against somebody saying that you're racist. But she's also coming in here with a majority of you guys already angry. But she's also coming in here with the majority of you guys already angry at her for something that she is just doing a job for. So in the end, just sometimes look at the facts. It is hard when it does come to the children. But I, myself, am coming in just looking at facts. And I only came here because my son mentioned the Facebook post. And I work in diversity and equity and inclusion, and so it was something, I wanted to hear all of your opinions. And I wanted to, when my daughter starts school, know that she's coming somewhere that's going to welcome her with open arms, with her advocating for other people. And I'm getting a little bit of mixed messages, which is fine. You're all entitled. We're all entitled to our personal feelings. But she is just here to do her job and invest her time in your children. And if other school districts are looking to her and saying that she knows what she's doing, then maybe just a little trust in her, but somewhat take the feelings out and just look at the facts sometimes. And nobody else to, like, that's just, as an outsider, because Stevo has been a great community so far. We've only been here for a few months. And, you know, I hope to stay here and buy property. And so it's nice to hear everybody's opinions and thoughts, so.
Okay.
My name is Lance Carey. My family moved here about six years ago. We moved to Stevo at Highland so we could go to this school. We attended a school play here with coworkers. So we were like, wow, this school is amazing. We want to go here. So we moved here. Two girls have gone through here, and I have one son left going through. I had no idea what this meeting was going to be. I sat here and started listening, and I was like, oh, it's about a contract dispute. Okay, that's interesting. And then the new superintendent got on there, and I was astounded at what she said. I don't use Facebook. I thought it was a contract dispute, from what I saw. What I've heard from her multiple times is that I'm a problem. I'm a problem because I'm a white male. People, like, she must think I'm secretly racist, when, I mean, it's a crazy thing to have to defend, like, no, no, I'm not racist. It's not something, you know, impossible to defend. I'm not. I'm, you know. What I'm concerned about is, I'm hearing, I'm a problem, white male's a problem. I have a son that's coming through this school. He's a white male. If the leadership says he's a problem because of who he is, that's a problem for me. He's gotten the issues of this school before, and I've sat down with some of the teachers, and we've discussed things, and been really open, and hey, he's done this, and how can we fix that? If he comes home and says, I'm being taught I'm a problem because of who I am, what can I say to the teacher? How can I have a meeting with the teacher or the principal and say, how do we resolve this? I have heard an invitation from the superintendent that said, if you don't like what I say, you don't have to come. He's invited us not to come here anymore. So we're going to go home. We have two weeks until school starts and say, are we going to homeschool this year? Because am I comfortable sending my son, who is viewed as a problem, as I am apparently, to a school that's going to teach him that? And I'm not. So unless there is some change, I'm not comfortable. Like I said, we moved here for this school, and two girls have gone through this school. At this point, I don't feel comfortable sending my son to this school.
Yes, sir.
My name is Brett Wise. I have two girls that go here. We've been here for seven years. And I do believe that Dr. Reed felt like she was an outsider. This is a tight community, and I still feel like an outsider, even though I've been here this long. This is a tight group, and it is very hard to get in. And even when you are, you're really not in, which is fine. I mean, we got to all start somewhere. We've had problems with our daughter in the special needs. We've had to fight. We've fought a lot. So I'm happy that she's pushing for certain things. But on the other end, as a educator and a leader, sometimes you have to hold back of your personal feelings of... I believe she feels that way. I completely agree, and I wouldn't doubt that there's been people that have said stuff to her. But on the other end, not everyone is that way either. I mean, we were outsiders. We still are at certain things, and it will always be that way, and we're okay with that. But we know this can be a good place. You can choose your battles. We had to fight for our daughter, and we've had other issues with other children. And we've been able to come together with the school and figure out a solution. And that's usually always come up. And we've been able to work together as a parent with the school itself, not just expecting the school to fix everything for you. The parents also have to jump in and take a big role as their kids. We can't expect teachers to do everything anymore. It just can't happen. So I hope we can move forward and get things resolved. I mean, there's always three sides. One side, third side, and then the truth in between. So there's truth to everything that's being said tonight. So hopefully we can come together and get over this and move forward, make this the greatest school we have.
Two more on Zoom, okay? Curtis on Zoom?
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes, I really did now want to speak during this, as I'm a new member of the community, only been here not even three months. My wife and I and our two boys moved here. I joined here because the school board, well, A, I was coming regardless of controversy or not, because I'm very invested in my children and ensuring they not only get the education that I feel they deserve, but that they're treated fairly. My children are mixed. Not that that matters to me, right? And it shouldn't matter to anyone. However, I moved from a state that I felt they were not going to be given an opportunity because of that. I was very concerned coming to the... I keep hearing how great Griffin School is, how great it is. And when I was doing research on the school without attending here, the concern I had was there... There were complaints of if you weren't a part of the community, or if you were new to the community, you were ostracized, right? Your kids would not get the same treatment as people who may have, as I heard someone speak earlier, they went to school there, and now their kids are going to school there, right? I understand the roots are deep here. While I'm not going to say that everything, you know, that Ms. Reed or Dr. Reed said wasn't from an emotional standpoint, it does seem like there is a bit of issue with the acceptance of someone for their qualifications. And I guess where I'm going with this is, if you are offended because she said these things, then you have to look at yourself and say, maybe it's not that she's saying you're the problem because you're white or because you're a man. Maybe it's because you're not standing up and saying, what is happening isn't right. As a veteran, I'm retired military. I spent 20 years in the military. I got to experience a lot in diversity. And the only way you're going to fight hatred is by standing up and saying, this cannot happen. So if you are silent while it's happening, you are part of the problem. I don't know what Facebook post there was, if there was, if that was the case. But if there was, if you guys don't want to be viewed as this community, we had a saying in the military, right? If you harbor terrorists, if you keep terrorists within your village, you are becoming a terrorist, right? That becomes a target of opportunity at that point. Not calling y'all terrorists. I'm just saying that we have to look inside and say, we have to stand up for what is right. We have to stand up for what is good. And that's all I have to say.
I got one more on Zoom, and then we'll come back to you, okay? Tracy Rappke on Zoom. Tracy?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. I do not have a student at this school, but I am a community member, and I'm an educator of 30-plus years. And I did see the Facebook post, and that's why I'm here tonight. It made me sad to see people, you know, throwing mud and using inclusivity as a bad representation of what we should be doing in education. I want to just say welcome to our new superintendent, and I know what it's like to be in grief, and I know what it's like to try to take on a new job. And so I'm wishing you well with those things going hand in hand. That's super hard. And I want you to know that I do understand what that's like. My husband and I want the best for this community. The school has an amazing reputation, and I know that we can be better than this. You know, I think that it worries me when I hear people say that my son is going to be targeted because he's white. I would love for you to imagine what it would be like to have your son wrapped in brown skin every day and know what it's truly like to be targeted. I don't think that's what our superintendent said. I think that what she said was that she wants to support all students. And maybe we have missed the mark in terms of being welcoming and also, I don't know, reaching out. I understand that it's hard in the summer as an educator to get a hold of administration at times. And I would really love to see this community take a breath and take a beat and let the school year unfold. Let's see what happens before we jump to conclusions. I think that all of us deserve a break. And I think that this Facebook post, you know, really did a lot to stir up a lot of really interesting emotions. You know, I think that we all need to be cautious about the things that we put online. And it's interesting to see the group mentality go down. I don't think there's anything to be afraid of. I think that what we have to keep in mind is our kids and the year ahead for our kids, and all the possibilities that are ahead for our kids. And so I really hope that we, as a community, can come together and welcome in this new school year and work side by side to make good things happen at this school that has such an amazing reputation. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Frank Ursman. I teach fifth grade here. This is my 11th year. Hey, my grandma hangs on the wall out there in 1920 something. My kids went here. I went here. My mom went here. Long story short, this is a bargain that was established. It was negotiated. It was TA'd by the district and the teachers. I'm on the bargaining team. I'm not available. In the summer, I pay houses 10 hours a day, all summer long. I don't have time to come back and renegotiate something that's already done. This is about a failure of leadership to come in with soft hands and get to know a community and a school. How can you know a school when nobody's present? It's July. How can you know the teachers and the teaching assistants and the parent educators and the families when nobody's here? It's July. It's now August. I have zoomed from my ladder dangerously in places just to be a part of this conversation. This is an absence of just gentle leadership coming in and saying, I'm going to get to know this school. How much foresight the board had to task Greg Woods, outgoing superintendent, and the two principals, and Kelly Anderson to be present to document this process. But, and Kim, our financial administrator, what a perfect way to invite a new leader into our school. The contracts negotiated with the teachers. Let's move forward into a great year. I am not a racist. I'm a businessman, and I'm a teacher, and I'm a parent, and I'm a grandparent now too. I have people who say, hey, I'd really like to sub at your school this year. I'm like, I don't think you want to come near our school right now. I don't want to go near our school. I'm a white male. Thanks for bringing that up, Mr. Carey. I'm just here to do my job. I love serving the community. I love serving kids. I love... Don't mistake this absence of comments from a lot of the teachers to mean we're not for reforming special ed or improving things here. I'm all for some great stuff around now. Why wouldn't I be? But don't mistake that this is not about racism. This whole conversation's been hijacked to be about racism, and I wonder why. It's very simple business and leadership. Run the school. That's what you're tasked with. Manage the superintendent. That's what you're tasked with. Rebecca will manage me. That's what she's tasked with. And you parents will keep me in line too, and I appreciate you for that. And I appreciate your support tonight. It is not about what this whole thing has been turned into. I'm so disappointed. And you can hear the emotion in my voice. None of us should be here for this tonight. And I applaud what you said. Don't think that I don't. But the last thing it's about is what it's been purported to be in this imbalance in this room. It's not what we're here for. Thank you.
I'm Kayleen. I'm a teacher here at Griffin. Frank is always a hard act to follow, so... And my thoughts are jumbled, so I apologize in advance. But I think, like all teachers, we totally know that there is so much room for progress and change, and we even put that in our contract if we want change. And always our goal is for the best for our students, for your kids. And we love that it's this tight community. But full transparency, I feel like my joy for the start of the year has been completely wiped out by the... Instead of getting a welcoming email from our new super and leadership, I got an email where I was berated, and I felt like I was very... I felt like I was berated and just told all the things I was doing wrong prior to even meeting my new super. And it just feels horrible to feel like I've already unimpressed my new boss. And so I'm really hoping that we can find some resolution before the start of the year. Thank you for supporting.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Jeff Devlin. My family attends in parts of August and World War II. I have no idea what the hell's going on. I was pissed off by a couple of staff members saying I needed to be here, so I'm here. The meeting was supposed to be at six, and I guess it got changed to by 15 a couple of days ago. Not communicating with me. I have no idea what the hell's going on. I will watch Facebook, create another thing I got to check out on Facebook, right? And my personal feeling is, somebody new coming into this community, that we all moved here probably using Griffin School District as a major ingredient in determining why we want to move out here. So for somebody to... And again, I don't know what's going on, what I've heard, that somebody has used racism as a way to describe this community. That's BS. And if that is true, you're going to see me on your calendar.
Okay.
If there's no other hand phrase, we do have one written comment that I've been handed that was asked to read on behalf of... Well, I don't know who it is. I didn't read it yet. I don't know. Letter to Griffin Board, do you want to read it, third chair?
You know what? You're doing a great job.
Okay, thanks. I don't want to take your authority.
No.
This is a letter to Griffin Board from Joe Bishop. Hello, this is just a short letter to the Griffin School Board to express the custodial department's appreciation of Ms. Reed. We've only had a limited time to get to talk to Ms. Reed, as she had said, for the safety of teachers and staff. She'd be closing the school to non-custodial staff for a short period of time during the summer. It is nice that Griffin administration continues to think about the safety of our staff. Thank you, Joe Bishop and the custodial staff.
Okay, it looks to be we're done with our second round of public comment. Appreciate everybody's interest and practice of respecting time and being quiet. There's a lot of people in this room. It was a great exercise of respect and community, though there's a lot of differing, different views and passion in people's commentary. So I just wanted to express my appreciation for that. Now brings us good of the order.
I have one thing to share, but I'm actually... Hayden, can I... I have one thing to share, but I'm actually, Hayden, can I, like, put you on the spot? I'll, I'll share the first part, but the Griffin Community or Community Foundation or School Foundation is hosting an auction to support lots of wonderful things that support our kids. Can you share the date and where those tickets are available?
Yeah, sure. So the Griffin School Foundation is a, a separate nonprofit adjacent to Griffin that happens to do good work for Griffin. We do not fund any of the Griffin budget, so I want to clear that up if there's any thought about that. We give out scholarships to students who went to Griffin, and we do teacher grants so that all those expenses that our teachers spend money on out of their own personal pockets, hopefully, we can offset some of those when requested. So that's what the Griffin School Foundation is. We are here for the kids. We are here for the educators, and we are here for the community. We have a fundraiser coming up. It's, it is our moneymaker that carries our, our fundraising budget for two years. It's our biennial auction. It's on September 23rd. It will be over at the Steamboat Tennis and Athletic Club. It is open to the community by ticket. And the reason it's by ticket is because there's insurance and liability and all sorts of good stuff. So I would encourage you to get one of the tickets a flex. There's a flex I saw, less than 60 ticket flex, which is a good thing because means we're selling out. We're doing well. But I would encourage you to come be part of it. If you want to just learn more about the foundation or what we do or the proceeds of what we're going to spend our money on, my name's Hayden. I'm a mom. I'm a Griffin person. I'm a neighbor here. Please call me, find me. Kelly's welcome to give out my phone number and my email. But I'd be happy to get together one-on-one or in groups to talk more and share that information. But September 23rd, stack 16.
Thank you. I'd kind of take advantage of the group for that.
Good of the order? Emma? Nope. None from me either, anything at all? Okay, we will be moving into executive session as a board this evening. But, so why don't we take a 10-minute recess before we reconvene and then move in? So we give everybody the opportunity to exit in a orderly setting.
Because there are so many new people, can you explain what executive session is?
Okay. An executive session is when the board can convene without the public present to discuss certain matters of, they're, they're very defined of either legal or personnel in nature. Part of our normal business.
And tonight's will be legal and personnel and discussion?
There'll be no, yep. So when we come back, just everybody, you know, thank you. For clarity, you won't be in the room when we come back and reconvene and then immediately go into executive session, more than likely. And it will be very specific about legal and personnel for performance review.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome to come up and ask your questions.
Now we're in reset. Now we're in reset. For 10 minutes, we're going to recon-